I'd like to call the April 18th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And the first order of business is our invocation by Ms. Sharon Griffin, our county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Please bless all those who are gathered here this evening. Father, we pray for our military, first responders, and frontline workers who continue to serve our country with tremendous courage. As we celebrate County Government Week, we pray for your blessings upon each and every county employee as they serve the citizens of our great county. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, join me in a moment of silence. Amen.
Assistant County Manager, Mr. Ben Warren, will lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize some elected officials here tonight. Sheriff Hans Miller, thank you, sir, for being here. Colonel Chris Thomas, Second In Command for the sheriff's office, thank you, sir, for being here. Alderman from North Topsol Beach, Mr. Grant, is here tonight. Ms. Amiga Jarman, Registered Deeds, is here. I think I've seen her somewhere. Thank you for being here. We ask all that's in attendance, please set your cell phone to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period on the agenda, which is at the end of the meeting. With no other items being considered, I would entertain a motion to adopt the meeting agenda.
Motion approved.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any item on the consent agenda that any board member would like to have removed for discussion later?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We already now are at item three, which is public comment. Ms. Griffin, has anyone signed up?
Mr. Chairman, no one has signed up this evening for the public comment period.
I will turn the presentations over to you for reading those into the record. And I think we have people assigned to administer them.
Yes, sir, Chairman. And I will begin with the first proclamation for County Government Week. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation, County Government Week. Whereas counties are one of America's oldest forms of government, dating back as early as 1634, and currently, the nation's 3,243 counties provide essential services to more than 330 million citizens. And whereas through organizational structures vary, all county governments are on the front lines of delivering vital services to residents. And whereas Onslow County proudly employs 1,300 employees and 26 departments who provide outstanding service to more than 200,000 citizens. And whereas, in order to keep our community healthy, vibrant, and safe, Onslow County provides mandated and non-mandated services that play a key role in our citizens' lives every day. And whereas each year, Onslow County celebrates County Government Week in an effort to both highlight services provided to citizens and thank the public servants that work every day for the benefit of our residents. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners declares April 18th through 22nd, 2022, as County Government Week, and is committed to lifting up the outstanding work that is done every day and to fostering an environment where all of our employees feel valued, engaged, and included. Presented this 18th day of April 2022 by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners, and Chairman Bright has requested that Commissioner Paul Buchanan present this. A representative from our Onslow County Government Week Committee is going to accept. Ms. Angela Hoffman.
This is an honor and a pleasure for me. I've been around these employees for the last 18 years. They're the hardest working individuals I've ever seen. They make our job a lot easier. They're very easy to work for. Sometimes they get a little bit nervous when one of us shows up, but most of the time, they're very happy for what we do. I have, over the years, worked very hard to make sure our employees are recognized every year. But I'm not going to take the thunder from this young lady because this young lady right here puts together all of this with the staff that she's working with. But Angie, if you would, I'll let you tell them what you've got going on this week.
Okay. I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for recognizing this week as County Government Week. On behalf of the staff, we're proud to work for Onslow County Government and have the opportunity to serve our citizens. This week, we try to give back to the employees. We have a golf tournament and other activities planned. The biggest thing that we do is our picnic for our staff of 1,300 that come out on Friday and enjoy that, and some other fun and prize giveaways that we're able to do with the donations from the employees through fundraisers.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our next proclamation this evening is for National Coin Week, and I will read that into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation, National Coin Week 2022. Whereas throughout history, coins have helped to tell the story of civilization. They frequently reflect the economic development of their country of origin, as well as the scientific advancement and artistic values of the people who produce and use them. And whereas the American Numerismatic Association is a federally chartered, nonprofit educational organization that has sponsored National Coin Week since 1924. And whereas the Jacksonville Camp Lejeune Coin Club is an ANA member club committed to promoting numismatics in the community. And whereas the theme for 2022 National Coin Week is, quote, "Dynamic Designs: Artistic Masterpieces." And whereas coins, paper money, and other numismatic objects have featured beautiful artistry since ancient times. And whereas the artists who create these designs are some of the most talented in history. And whereas collecting coins, paper money, and related objects has always been one of our nation's most cherished and popular pastimes. Whereas collectors around the country are celebrating National Coin Week by sharing the hobby with others. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners acknowledges April 17th through 23rd, 2022, as National Coin Week in Onslow County, and encourages our citizens to spread the knowledge of numismatics and share the joy of collecting coins and paper money. Presented this 18th day of April 2022 by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners, Chairman Bright has requested that Commissioner Price present this proclamation, and representatives from Jacksonville Camp Lejeune Coin Club will accept if all of you would like to come forward to the microphone.
I have a certain personal connection with coin collecting. It goes back to being a teen and sitting around the counter and looking over coins with my dad and trying to find that S or D down there under, S is San Francisco, D is Denver, which meant printed the coin and that type of thing. So, you know, it's something I really enjoyed doing as a kid. You can tell a lot about the history of the country, as Ms. Griffin cited in the proclamation. You go back to 1942, 43, 44, when you think of all pennies being copper, but during those war years, they were steel pennies. So it's pretty cool finding steel pennies and doing that kind of thing. And the buffalo nickels, and I could go on and on about different stuff. But we appreciate you educating the public on coins and presenting that throughout this week. Thank you, sir.
I'd like to thank the Commissioners for the proclamation. And I'd like to invite anyone who is interested in coins or has coins and wants to know what they are, to feel free to come by one of our coin club meetings. We meet the second Thursday of every month at the Chamber of Commerce over on Combrance Road. We'd be glad to have you come join us. And if you want to join our club, it's very inexpensive. We'd be glad to have you there. Thank you.
Our final proclamation this evening is in recognition of the Month of the Military Child. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation, Month of the Military Child. Whereas April is the Month of the Military Child, a special month to recognize and pay tribute to military families and their children for the daily sacrifices made and for their commitment, courage, and unconditional support of our military services. And whereas Onslow County is proud to be home to approximately 10,000 children whose parents serve in the military stationed aboard Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune and Marine Corps Air Station New River. And whereas the children of our service members continue to make significant contributions to schools, communities, and the nation despite prolonged and repeated absences of one or both parents. And whereas Month of the Military Child reaffirms our commitment to ensuring excellence in schools, childcare, and youth services to military children who face unique challenges that other children their age never experience. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners declares April 8th, 2022, as Paint the Town Purple Day, and encourages individuals, businesses, and organizations to display purple in their community spaces, wear purple clothing, and otherwise utilize the color to show support for and honor our smallest heroes, the children of our military service men and women. Presented the 18th day of April 2022 by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners, Chairman Bright has requested that Commissioner Robin Knapp present this proclamation. And I believe we have school liaisons from Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune and Marine Corps Air Station New River to accept.
I just want to say that as a military brat myself, I grew up and I was born on a military base. I was raised by my dad and mom. Obviously, he was in the military. He was in the Army, the Air Force. I spent time overseas in Japan and Korea. I went to DOD High School there in Japan. And then I subsequently went into service, and then my kids became military kids as well. And it's a tradition with our family. And I can't express sincerely how they treat us, the military and their family members. You know, we're just like what I just said. We're all family members. And when you're overseas, it's a different environment. I mean, when you're overseas, you all become family. There's no racial boundaries or anything. We're all military brats, and we're proud of it. And in fact, I still have my high school reunion with a bunch of my military brats from 1979, and we stay in touch. And it's one of the best experiences that I've ever had. And I just want to appreciate the fact that you guys work to honor these kids, especially me. I'm one of them. And I'm a little old, but I am one of those kids. And it's remarkable what you guys do. And thank you very much.
And you're wearing your purple. Thank you so much.
I am. I had no idea.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank the county commissioners for the proclamation and for recognizing the sacrifices that military children do go through. And this year in particular, I'd like to take a moment to recognize the teachers and the school staff for Onslow County schools. It's been a challenging few years, and our military children have felt it as much or more than anyone. They're not around their extended family, and those teachers and school staff just love on those children like they were their own. And we recognize that, and we really do appreciate it. We thank you all for being our community. Thank you.
The Community Child Protection Team annual report. Ms. Winston, second.
Yes, sir. That's Ms. Kimberly Winston from the Department of Social Services.
Good evening.
Vice Chair Foster, Commissioners, Ms. Griffin, and all those who serve Onslow County, good evening. I am here to present our annual report, which is required by the North Carolina General Statute 7B 1406. Positions of our team is mandated by the North Carolina State statutes, and we have 22 members representing multidisciplinary agencies in Onslow County. We come together to better understand the causes of child death in our county in order to address systemic problems and implement strategies to prevent future child abuse, neglect, and death. Am I doing this right? So the number of cases that we review for 2021, and I want to say the cases that we review are a year behind. So these are actually deaths that took place in 2020, and we get them the following year. So we had four investigation assessments. Those were DSS cases of neglect that we reviewed, our team reviewed, and we had a total of 24 child fatalities. Of those four deaths, I'm sorry, four investigations that we reviewed for DSS, they were improper medical care. We did supervision and alcohol used by parents, mental health, and we had an unruly juvenile that we reviewed. As far as the child fatalities, we had three co-sleeping deaths, six medical deaths, 10 premature births, and we're seeing a lot of those this the last couple of years. We had a SIDS death, one hanging, one unspecified cause, which was unknown. We had an assault where a child was killed by a head and neck injury, one fire, and an overdose. Some of the conditions that affect the well-being of children and families in Onslow County is, of course, co-sleeping continues to be a main priority for us, unsafe sleep positions. Illicit drug use is still going on during pregnancy, and we've had an increase in substance-affected infants, teen suicide, as well as opioid use among youth and families. As you can see, from 2019 to 2021, it has gone down for some of the deaths. But as I always say, one death is one too many. For 2021, we had two unsafe sleep practices and one hanging suicide, teen suicide. Some of the strategies that we use to address the conditions is, of course, we provide ongoing education in recognizing and reporting child abuse, suicide prevention, dangers which are present when using drugs while pregnant. We have flyers out, especially at OB-GYN clinics, just trying to raise awareness that the dangers that drugs do have on pregnant women with their children when they're born. We continue education and efforts at safe sleep positionings for infants, providing appropriate supervision for children, and prematurity imperinado issues. Once again, that is on the rise, not only in Onslow County, but throughout the state of North Carolina. And of course, we continue to participate in community outreach and community gathering functions. Most of those have been virtual, so we're looking forward to some more in-person outreach things that we can do. Some of our local accomplishments, we do purchase and distribute pack and plays to prevent unsafe sleeping practices, co-sleeping. We also partnered this year with the local health department, community relations, to sponsor social media ads on Facebook to promote safe sleep practices and suicide prevention in our county. Once again, the purchasing and distribution of car seats. We work with the community paramedic program. They provide safe sleep education in the home. Some of us participated in the 5K Piers Walk Run for Safe Sleep. Multiple trainings and webinars that we participated in. And we continue to have 100% of our cases being reviewed, especially since 2020, when we went virtual because of COVID. I would like to say that we did provide 27 pack and plays and 12 car seats this past year. Some of the barriers of protecting our children that we see is assessed to available and affordable mental health and substance abuse services continues to be a barrier. A lot of our families have Medicaid, and we have very few providers that accept Medicaid. And sometimes we run across a lack of military involvement. And when I say that, we have child death, but we have a difficult time getting the medical records to review from Naval Hospital. And we are working on trying to get a liaison from Naval Hospital on our team. Some of the challenges for protecting our children, of course, this is a highly transient population because of the military, and we have some really young parents here. And then, of course, COVID-19 has had an impact on our community. Children have been isolated, and we've seen an increase in teen suicide and substance abuse cases. How do we help Onslow County? Well, we work with the Onslow Safe Kids Coalition. We partner with C-Mark, which is part of our health department, which is a care management for at-risk children, where they promote safe sleep education to pregnant women and families with children ages 0 to 12. I'm sorry, that should be 12 months of age, 0 to 12 months of age. We do pack and play, safe sleep items, the car seats, hands-on car seat safety checks, and we participate in state-intensive fatality reviews, as well as the trainings, as I mentioned earlier. And I'm pleased to say that all of our child welfare staff, once they are hired, they do complete safe sleep and substance-affected mandated training. So that concludes the annual report for the Community Child Protection Team, Community Child Fatality Protection Team. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
How much of an impact did the COVID-19 have on escalating the cases and deaths and so forth with our kids? I know this is, all of this is a 2020...
This is 2020 report, yes. So it was just kind of starting in COVID, you know, everything kind of shut down in March of 2020. And near the end of the years, when we really saw a lot of the suicide teen deaths that we are now reviewing, we just recently reviewed one last month during our team meeting. But we have seen, you know, schools were out, so the reports were not coming in, so kids were isolated. So we did see an increase. Now we're seeing an increase in those reports that are coming in, started last year.
Anybody have any more questions or comments?
Okay. If not, we do thank you for your support.
Well, thank you. Thank you for giving us that report.
You're welcome.
We'll now move on with public hearings, and I will turn this back over to our county manager, Ms. Griffin, for the start of the public hearing for rezoning.
Thank you so much, Chairman Bright. And Commissioners, we have two public hearings this evening. Our first public hearing is the Westall rezoning request, which is P R E Z 2022-0005. And I will introduce Ms. Jessica Rue, our Planning and Development Director, who will provide the staff background and recommendation.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. We have one rezoning for you today. It is a request to go from RA to highway business. This request was submitted by Charles Westall on behalf of C A M I Property Ventures. And the location of this is on the north side of Highway 172, adjacent to the entrance of Stump Sound Park, and the total acreage is 5.13. Right now, this property is mostly cleared and undeveloped. It does have access to Onwasso Water and Pluris Sewer Fire Service by South Onslow, as well as Turkey Creek. And our roads on 172 are at capacity on the most recent data we have. And so those would be utilities we would be looking at when we were looking to zone something commercially. You can see the property outlined is read as our subject parcel. It is adjacent to a great deal of property already zoned highway business. This is a very natural extension of a commercial district. RA, of course, is low-density residential and agricultural uses, where highway business encourages commercial uses on the highway, as well as higher-density residential uses. Our future land use plan, the map in there has this parcel split between high-density residential and medium-density residential. These are exactly as the classifications sound. And the planning board did unanimously recommend that you adopt this rezoning request at their March 3 meeting. It is supported by a number of policies in the plan, and they base this recommendation on the fact it's adjacent to highway business already. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rue. At this time, I will open the public hearing for P R E Z 2022-0005. We have only had one citizen that has signed up to speak, and that is, I believe, the applicant, Mr. Charles Westall of 353 West Golden Eye Lane in Sneets Ferry. Mr. Westall, if you would like to approach the microphone, you may speak on behalf of the project, if you wish to.
Gentlemen, ladies, good evening. Again, my name is Charles Westall. I'm the owner of the property. You know, I'm not really sure what protocol is, but I want to thank you all for the opportunity. March 3 was a good evening. And as I told Mr. Bennett earlier, Carter did a phenomenal job, and Robert, of kind of walking me through the process. And we sat down, and we had conversations about what this looks like. So again, I wanted to be appreciative of that. I know that they're not here this evening, but I wanted to extend my gratitude for that. Just a little bit about myself. I'm retired from the Marine Corps recently, and my wife and I and my two boys have settled down here in Sneets Ferry. And kind of as Mr. Knapp had mentioned earlier, I'm used to a certain way of life and community and service. So my vision for the property is the fact that it's adjacent to the park is not lost on me. And I think a very symbiotic relationship, something that enhances the park and allows it to move in the upward and outward trajectory that it currently is, is paramount in this situation. And I want you gentlemen and everyone here to know that that's not something that's lost on me. I've taken measures. My architect is here, and I've hired an engineering firm so that we can kind of methodically and in a calculated method go through what we think looks right. And I welcome interaction. I welcome this opportunity. This is something that I've been used to. And, you know, I thought after I retired, I was going to grow a beard and relax a whole lot. And I found out that it's kind of a calling. It's something that I want to be in and of the community. I want to add value, and I want to create something that Sneets Ferry and Onslow County can be proud of. So I guess I need to submit myself to you and for any questions or concerns you may have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Westall. If you want to sit on the front row, I will turn it over to the Commissioners in just one moment for questions. There's no one else signed up to speak at the public hearing. I'll make one call to the audience if anyone would like to speak on the Westall rezoning request. Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. And at this time, it is available for the Board of Commissioners discussion and questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I'd like to know if this conforms to the Sneets Ferry community plan.
As is in your staff report, this is in traditional neighborhood, and that would fit in the Sneets Ferry community plan. Yes, sir. Great question.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions for Ms. Rue or the applicant? We have a motion and a second. Here is no further discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Item B, Economic Development Land, Trask Land Company Incorporated. I'll turn this over to Brett.
Yes. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Trask Land Company is considering constructing a 50,000-square-foot medical office building and three retail/restaurant buildings varying in size from approximately 2,400 square feet to 4,800 square feet here in Burton Park. The buildings would be situated upon 146 Northwest Quarter Boulevard. That's tax parcel 330-12.8, consisting of approximately 11.67 acres, and a 4.3-acre portion of tax parcel 322-120. The buildings are estimated to cost in excess of $13 million to construct. The buildings are estimated to cost in excess of $13 million to construct, and are anticipated to result in the creation of at least 100 jobs that pay at or above the median average wage here in Onslow County. It's important to note that the construction costs would be paid by Trask. All we're considering tonight is whether they're to sell the land. The land is valued at, or proposed to be sold at $928,500, which we seller financed. Six payments would be due in the amount of $154,750, so that's $154,750. Due and payable on the 15th day of May 2026, and the 15th day of May each year thereafter until paid in full. If not sooner paid, the entire remaining indebtedness will be due and payable on May 15, 2032. No interest will be applied to this loan. The payment obligations will, of course, be evidenced by a promissory note and secured by a deed of trust. If approved, Trask Land Company, or its assigns, will be eligible to receive up to $928,500 in incentives from the county, payable in annual installments of $154,750, and that really just gets applied to the promissory note. So we're loaning him the money, and then if he meets all the objectives under the loan in the incentive agreement, then the promissory note would be reduced by that amount. There will be, the creation of, of course, the incentive agreement requires the creation of at least 100 jobs at, at or above the annual wage in Onslow County, as well as building these buildings that I just referred to within 48 months. Of course, soon as Trask Land Company, if they were to become the property owner, they'd have to start paying property taxes, and as part of this incentive agreement, they would have to timely pay those property taxes before being eligible for any incentive. Notice of this proposed transaction was published on April 5, 2022, in accordance with North Carolina law, and following a public hearing, will be ready for Commissioner, Commissioner consideration. So this time, I'd like to yield to Ms. Griffin for the public hearing in this matter.
Thank you, Mr. DeSelm, and at this time, I will open the public hearing for the Economic Development Trask Land Company Development Project. No one has signed up to speak. I know that Mr. Rafer Trask is here with us tonight and is available. If the Board of Commissioners have questions, they can call him forward when it is time for discussion and questions by the Board. I'll make one call to the audience. If anybody would like to get up and speak about the Trask land opportunity, you may approach the podium. You have five minutes, and I would ask for you to please introduce yourself.
Absolutely, I will. My name is John Hudson. I live in Richlands. I guess a few of the questions I have, a little bit on my background, I'm 20 years restaurant management, business experience, have my real estate license now. So I guess my, what I would like to find out is what the due diligence process was like in this case? Did the county approach Trask, or were they approached by, by the company? And I guess the big thing for me is, is there an opportunity, if the, if the county is selling land, is there an opportunity out there? Will someone in this medical facility or restaurant or retail buy the land without the tax incentives coming back to them? And what I mean by that, pretty self-explanatory, but is there an opportunity that we essentially are not giving the land away, even though we're creating the jobs, even though we're getting public, you know, property taxes? Is there an opportunity for the county to sell this land and there still not be incentives going back to the companies? Have they approached other medical facilities other than, who has proposed before us? Have they approached other, I mean, because it's prime real estate. Have they approached other restaurants or retail and somebody's offering to pay full price for it and not getting kind of incentives back? In my experience and what a little bit I know, it seems like, you know, in this instance, we may be picking the winners and losers in this because we're offering incentives to a company and we're not giving opportunity for everyone else. Now, maybe that's not, not true. Maybe it's, we've offered it to many people, but it seems like if we, if we told everyone, hey, we're offering this prime real estate for sale, then someone may be giving us a better offer. And my limited real estate experience, I tell my clients, you don't want to take the first offer you get, and you don't want to take an offer if you haven't put your house out on the market. So if you take an offer before you put your house on the market, you're probably not getting the best deal. So is there a better deal out there? And I just kind of like to know how the due diligence went with that and what the process was to get us to this point where we're talking about essentially giving away county land for free. I understand, I mean, I love the idea. I think, I live in Richland, so I think having a large medical facility here close to us is great. I love all the restaurants going up in Richland, so I think restaurants and retail right here will be great because it'll be utilized, and any time I don't have to go to Western Boulevard, it's a good day. But I'm just curious to know, is there a better option out there for the county to not have to give that money back and still be able to, you know, make some money from the selling of the land?
Thank you so much, sir. And for the clerk, could I have you repeat, I'm sorry, your name and your address for us?
Yes, ma'am. John Hudson, J O H N, H U D S O N, and my address is 102 Pecan Lane, Richlands, North Carolina, 28574.
Thank you so much, and if you would like to sit on the front row in case the Commissioners would like to call you up when they have an opportunity to consider this, would anyone else like to speak on the Trask project? Okay, seeing no one else, at this time, I will close the public hearing, and at this point, it is available now for the Board of Commissioners to discuss and to ask questions, and I'll be happy to provide any information, Brett or I, that might be needed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. We'll go into discussion now. Any discussion from the board members or questions for? I think Brett, maybe you could go over the criteria for Burton Park. Burton Park is, is land that we acquired through the economic development money, and it has to be so many jobs and to meet certain criteria. We don't, if you could explain that to the audience and let them know, and maybe answer some of his questions, I think that would, that would be, that would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. Regarding his question as to how this all came about, this was a Commissioner-driven project, so Chairman Bright and some other Commissioners had some contacts, said this kind of came to fruition, and we've been marketing the land out here in Burton, Burton Park for, I believe, over 20 years now, and we constantly work with the folks at Joe Ed and with Commissioners and others who bring economic development projects that, that may come to fruition here in Onslow County and specifically here in Burton Park. And so this is something certainly that is open for any company that is looking to come into Onslow County and bring, bring jobs and invest in infrastructure, et cetera. What we do as far as the legal side of it, we have to make sure that, that the community's going to get back in taxes and tax revenues and jobs and sales tax and property tax, et cetera, at least the amount that they're going to expend in incentives. So in this case, we expect to receive, I think I'm getting beeped. We're, we're expected to receive and generate more in tax revenue within a 10-year period than we will actually be given in incentives. And of course, these incentives are going to require at least 100 jobs. Some of these jobs, we project, especially in the medical office building, to be well above the average wage, ranging anywhere from $75,000 to $250,000 for some of the jobs, because you're going to have doctors, you're going to have RNs or PAs and the sort of medical professionals that really gather and garner a lot more wages. And then, of course, the, the added benefit of having some, a medical facility on this side of Onslow County, we, we thought as a staff that this would be a, a great boon to Richlands and the Southwest community to have access to high-quality medical care real close by.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Griffin, the, the money, we had a Shell building that was built by, actually built by Joe Ed and the county, and then we advertised the Shell building as an economic development package, and the Shell building came in at $1.4 million for, for the building, and there's quite a bit of land that went for that, but we, we ended up selling that building for, basically for, for what the building was, so the land went with it for free. So even though it wasn't a package deal, it was part of the land. Now, economic, the money that we make off of this deal goes into the Economic Development Fund, is that?
That is correct, and-
And that money is to be used only for economic development, for incentives and that sort of thing. So it's not something that we have that we pull out of our general fund for that, if that helps you understand it more.
And as Brett described, it is, when you look at economic development, legally, there are statutes, and there's also case law that governs it. We have to follow certain criteria in order to do an economic development incentive package. And if the development does not bring in the adequate number of jobs or enough economic boost to the community, we, we can't do a project like this. This particular project passed all of those factors easily because of the number of jobs that are being created and the income level of those jobs. And for example, the Shell building, I think, was marketed and listed with a real estate agent for two years before it ever, we ever even got nibbles on it. So we have tried with several of the parcels out in Burton Park. We're excited to see it start to, to get some interest.
Well, any, anybody that wants to purchase land in our, in our park, anybody can purchase land if you want to. You just have to meet certain criteria in order to get the, the incentive package. So that's pretty clear, and we've had this land for 20, 25 years.
25 years.
And I think we've got some information on, you know, what we paid for the land and that information.
One of the things, John, right? What's your last name again? Hudson?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's easy. I don't know why I didn't catch it the first time. One of the things I want to talk about on this, because I, I sat down and talked with Brett at length, actually extensively about this, and I kind of put a paper together to kind of weigh the pros and cons. That's what I want to do. You know, there are certain projects that I'm not for, but one of the constant things I keep hearing is that we're spending money, the county's spending money. Let me clarify that, we're not spending money. We're doing quite the opposite, okay? And if you hadn't noticed, it back in 1997, we, the county, purchased Burton Park, 730 acres for $625,000. Think about that, 730 acres for $630,000, market value in 1997. That land had to be cleared because it was all lumber, all trees. So it was cleared, I don't know what we did with the lumber, if we sold it back to whoever it might be, because, but we had to, we had to clear the land. And so whatever revenue that might generate, but I know that for, since 1997, we got 730 acres for $625,000 now for the fair market value that we're currently doing, which is approximately 15.97 acres. Okay, broken off into two sections, one for the 50,000-foot medical facility, the other one for two or three, whatever he wants to do, restaurants or whatever developer or company comes in here, decides to plant in Burton Park. Now, Burton Park was purchased, none of us Commissioners that are sitting on this board now had anything to do with Burton Park. You know, we came on the backside of Burton Park. We live in Burton Park. We have this big building, we have several businesses there, but for the most part, most of the land has been sitting there collecting dirt. That's bottom line, dirt, and there's no money out of dirt. Okay, you can't get any revenue out of dirt. And one of the things that, that we emphasize as Commissioners is that we want, okay, first of all, the Commissioners on this board are looking to reduce the tax rate. We're not looking to include, yeah, we're not looking to increase taxes whatsoever. So how do you combat that? By generating extra revenue that comes in, another revenue stream. We've got sales tax, we've got property tax, we have to find ways, and part of that is economic development. And for several years, we have been putting, we've been putting emphasis on Burton Park and not getting any return from Joe Ed or anything else, okay? So now we have an opportunity. So what does that equate to? So the land incentive is $928,500 for that parcel of land. As soon as an agreement is, is made, based upon the tax rate now at 70.5 cents for $100, Trask Land Company has to pay the county $6,545.92 per year for the land, subsequent to which, when construction is completed, that land value, conservatively speaking, the buildings and all the equipment in that is going to be worth maybe 13 million. I think it's going to be higher. It's probably going to be worth 19, maybe 20 million. So, but if you do the tax rate based on 70.5 cents for $100, that they start paying once the building is constructed, and they have a 48-month timeframe to get this, this done, which is four years. So what that jumps to, we're going to be paying 100, excuse me, I'm sorry, we'll be paying, I lost my place here, I wrote it down. Okay, so the levy for that will be $91,650,000 per year in revenue. Okay, that's based on 13 million, which is a conservative figure. I base it, I, I think it's going to be between 17 and 20. So going from 20-something years without drawing a penny, we automatically go to 91,650 in terms of cash for the county. That's called creating an external revenue stream to help us lower the tax rate and to help us not to raise taxes or be forced to raise taxes. Does that make sense? I'll use a phrase that one of my coworkers uses, he always says that, does that make sense? And when he says that, that makes sense to me because he puts it in layman terms. Now, keep in mind, this company, Trask, okay, we're not responsible for bringing the jobs into Onslow County. Let's make that clear. The county government does not create jobs. There have been a lot of talk about we need to focus in on jobs. The government needs to focus in on jobs. We, the county, don't create jobs. We, as a county entity, we create the atmosphere for somebody to come in to create those jobs. That's not what we're in the business for, we're county government, okay? We're not private enterprise. This land belongs to us, okay? We got it very cheap in 1997. We've turned around and used the incentive to bring a 13-to-20-million-dollar facility here and to promote business within Onslow County, but to promote business in Burton Park, which is badly in need of business. There's only three or four businesses within Burton Park, okay? And my pri, my previous company that I used to work for was interested in purchasing the Shell building, but they bailed out because they really wanted to go cheap, and we would lose money, so that deal fell through, okay? So what I'm trying to say is, when I look at this, they've got a 10-year window starting this year, 2022 to 2032, to meet all the incentives that we've requested for them. Brett has already gone over it, 100-plus jobs, have construction up within 48 months, okay? If you don't maintain that incentive, then Trask Land Company is going to be responsible for paying us $154,750 every year that they don't meet that benchmark. So the incentive for them is, it would behoove them to get that construction done within four years so they don't have to pay that, which is a win for us, because the sooner the construction is completed, the property value goes up tremendously. Now, I want to put that in perspective, okay? And I'm, I'm trying to simplify this because I had to do it for myself so I can, so I can understand it. I'm going from dirt to zero, and I'm going up to, over here to $95,000 a year at a conservative rate per year of extra revenue for the county. To me, that's a win-win. Plus, what it does is, you know, people talk about, you know, who's going to be responsible for bringing the jobs in? Not us. Mr. Trask is. That's his responsibility. That's what is part of the contract. It's not the county commissioner saying, get these jobs in here, we want this people, this people, whatever. No, it's his job to bring the businesses in, okay? Not us. We just provide the land. And the thing about it is, what really gets me is that, you know, everybody thinks that the county Commissioners, you know, we try to, we create jobs. We don't create jobs, we create the atmosphere, and I've already touched on that. So what does it do? It doesn't cost the county anything, not a dime, and I keep hearing people saying it's costing us money. Show me where it's costing the county money. If you can show me where this is costing the county money, show it to me and explain it to me. But when you keep saying it's costing us money with no viable backup for that, it makes no sense to me. And, hang on just a second. What it does too is, you know, it's kind of like the doorway, it's like opening a little door. We get the businesses up, it's successful, we have a medical facility, which on this side of town is Southwest and Richlands, et cetera. We have maybe a restaurant, maybe a hotel, maybe a, whatever comes in here, okay? It opens up the door to make this place more attractive for other businesses to look at us, and guess what? Next thing you know, we got some big manufacturer saying, well, they got a hotel right there, they got a gas station, they got a medical facility. It helps us with our long-term goal too of getting a sports complex in here as well. So these little baby steps amount to big revenue for the county. And like I said, I can't find anything wrong with it, and I support this 100%. Mr. Trask, I thank you for coming today. I've read your proposal extensively, and I'm excited about this for Onslow County because this is not for Jacksonville or anything, this is for Onslow County, period.
Let me say something, I'll ask Sharon about this. We, we had, we had a marketing company, Joe Ed was a marketing company for our park, and for all these years, that just hadn't developed, that they, they out searching all the time for somebody, they putting flyers out, they inviting people down here, they telling people what we got, telling people, you know, what the benefits are. We got water, we got sewer, we got natural gas in here, and we got roads and a traffic light, and we close to Highway 2- light, and we close to Highway 258 and the interstate. But we have a marketing company, but the marketing company just didn't seem like it was working for us out here. So that's, it's not that we were trying to market it, we just had people that contacted us and met the criteria of what the economic development regulation said we had to do, and that's what happened. That deal's open for anybody that wants to bring that to the table in my book.
Let me ask you one question. So I said that it's not costing us money. What's costing us money is not developing this land. What's costing us money is to maintain the maintenance for that land, the retention ponds on that land. Am I right? Is it costing us money to do that?
Yeah, of course, there's costs with that. And I think just for the citizen state, what you say, but there's no revenue being generated, Onslow County government-owned property doesn't generate any tax revenue. And I think that's what Commissioner Knapp's referring to. So once this is in a private entity, then the tax revenue actually starts getting.
But let me understand something. So once they sign this agreement, okay, any additions to that particular land that they decide to purchase, whether it be retention ponds, upgrade to sewer, or whatever it might be, that's on the cost of Trask Land Company, not the county?
That's absolutely correct.
With that being said, that's a win-win for the county. And that's my opinion on that.
Any other commissioners have?
I have something that, a lot of times, people are saying taxpayers' money, taxpayers' money. Those of you that, there's probably not a whole lot of you out in the audience right now. Anybody remember the Global Trans Park? It's in Kinston. You paid $5 for your license tag, extra for that when that was going on at that period of time. At that time, I sat on the Eastern Region. When the Eastern Region dissolved, they gave me a check for $2 million that I brought back here for economic development. That money has helped us out in the park. So it wasn't taxpayers' money, it was the $5 everybody was paying for their license tag. And that money was dissolved when the company, when actually the Eastern Region dissolved, and I brought a check back to this county for $2 million, and we've been using it in economic development. I just wanted the public to know that we do get money that comes from other sources that's not taxpayers' money.
I think, Mr. Hudson, you mentioned about advertising, and I think Joe Ed has spent time and other entities with the government, spent time out marketing Burton Park and trying to get people to come in and build or be a part of it. And commercialization of this park, side of the park is going to start with incentives, kind of like down in Holly Ridge where they started with just one and then ballooned into the next one, into the next one, into the next one, is that once we're able to open that faucet, that the incentives may be a lot different if this place becomes the booming thing that we want it to be, and maybe folks will be knocking on the door going, how do we get in here? Well, it might create a lot more leverage for us if the atmosphere and the park is starting to grow and be maximized. So this opportunity presented itself and was able to bring in business that's going to bring more, hopefully in the future, more business to this park and make it a viable place for business to come, create jobs, and get this property off of the tax books and into making money, bringing more money into Onslow County to lessen the burden of the current property tax owners.
The properties that we've sold already, that we have the concrete plant, we have the Shell building, we have the daycare center down here, all of those places that we've actually sold those properties has well, well, way overpaid for the initial investment for Burton Park. And that money that we sold goes back into, I think I mentioned this, it goes back into the Economic Development Fund. It's got to be used for that. It can't be used for anything else. So if we collect the tax base on it, that's where we get the revenue from, it is the tax base. And that's what we're trying to build to make our tax rate easier for us to not have to raise taxes. So any further discussion, gentlemen?
Well, a lot of the folks I know, they drive to Wilmington or they drive to New Bern to see medical specialists, and the fact that we'll have that in our backyard, so to speak, is going to be an asset for Onslow County. And it's just a slow pitch for me in that, you know, you're not getting any revenue from the county having the piece of land for 25 years. We've done nothing with it, and now we're putting it on the tax rolls and we're going to have property tax money coming in from it, and it just makes common sense to me.
Yep. You know, I've got something that I want to say about it. And, you know, we got a veteran population here in this facility that the gentleman is going to build for Onslow County. Our veteran population goes to Greenville, Fayetteville, Wilmington, to surrounding areas because we don't have the specialty clinics. This is absolutely key to our veterans and our citizens both. It's a win-win situation. I'm extremely happy and welcome you aboard, sir.
Any further, gentlemen?
I don't know what else to say. That's all that's been said. I'm on, I'm on, yeah.
First, thank Mr. Hudson for coming in and asking the questions so people can hear that information. So that's good. And, I mean, it goes back to his high school education at Southwest High School. So we got to throw that out there.
Not your teacher, was he?
No, that was me.
We have, we have.
He's got a question.
Can he have a question?
Yeah, come back up.
Real quick. So just to clarify, the incentives, the incentives that comes back is, when you guys are marketing, that's open to any business, as you guys have been talking about this for 25 years, that incentive has been marketed as part of coming to Burton Park to anybody who's been interested. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's what I need to know. Thank you.
Now, let me say this while you're up to the stand there. Part of our park, Burton Park, is zoned for light industry. Some of it is zoned because we wanted to get anchor-type business in here. I think some of the commissioners, maybe Commissioner Scott has even talked to some folks about a hotel or motel coming here. Now, I don't know if that's going to develop or not, but.
Sure hope so.
When you get a, when you get an anchor-type establishment in here, it just draws more, more folks in here. And if you know of anybody, and any of the people listening or watching, if you know anybody that needs to talk to us about purchasing out here to build, even if you don't get a, and the land is different depending on what location it is in the park here, the price is different. But we have to sell it for fair market value. We can't, we can't sell it for less than that. But if you know anybody, or if you know anybody who wants to invest in this park, please have them come see us. And we talk about this a lot. You talked about it in one of the, Joe Ed, the meeting last night about Burton Park and how it's been stale for 25 years. But we're hoping we can get anchor businesses in here to draw that. The only thing about industry is Onwasa is a water and sewer provider, and if industry comes in, it has to be light industry. It can't be heavy industry without putting in a pretreatment plant to treat wastewater before it goes down the pipe.
Sure.
So that's the only restriction there. But that's not a restriction we have. That's a restriction for Onwasa, the Water and Sewer Authority.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of a motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. One of the commissioners has asked me to have a short break.
I know who that is.
Short break.
So, let's go about.
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes.
Sure.
I call a meeting back to order. Next item, number six, is randomized cluster evaluation of cardiac arrest system trial. That will be, Jason?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Onslow County has been invited to participate in a research trial conducted by Duke University. This is a six-year trial to improve out-of-hospital cardiac arrest. This is something that my team has already taken a look at. There is no financial contribution by the county to the study. However, Duke does provide some reimbursement for our time spent on task. The focus of this is out-of-hospital cardiac arrest prior to EMS response. So this is looking at community CPR, working with a 911 center, as well as increasing our first response to cardiac arrest. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Most to approve.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? Here are none on a favor of a motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jason. Purchase of land on 6B from the city of Jacksonville, we'll let our county attorney present that item.
Yes, Chairman. The county currently holds a 99-year lease for the land which the Emergency Operations Center and Fire Station Number Four are situated upon. The city of Jacksonville wishes to build a new fire station that will replace fire sta- The city of Jacksonville wishes to build a new fire station that will replace Fire Station Number Four. And the county could use Fire Station Number Four to increase the capacity of ambulance space for emergency services, as well as provide additional office space for EMS staff. The county is currently working with an architect on plans to expand the Emergency Operations Center and will be able to incorporate any needed renovations to Fire Station Number Four during the same construction project funded by the federal ARPA grants. The Board of Commissioners is asked to consider whether to purchase the land it currently leases from the city of Jacksonville. It's approximately 8.8 acres. For the sum of $1 million, $750,000 will be paid at closing and the balance upon the city of Jacksonville vacating Fire Station Number Four. The city of Jacksonville would in turn continue to utilize Station, Fire Station Number Four until October 31, 2023 pursuant to a lease and maintain its use of the fiber optics room in the Emergency Operations Center. The county will also be deeded easements to continue to use Firehouse Drive for access purposes and use a stormwater pond until an onsite pond can be constructed. As part of this proposed project, the city of Jacksonville has also agreed to allow the county to perform its own inspection services, as has been typical with county projects within the city's jurisdiction. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the purchase of, from the city of Jacksonville land for the sum of $1 million and authorize the chairman and/or county manager to execute all documents necessary to consummate the purchase and effectuate the terms of the agreements as outlined in the documents provided.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. To be clear to the public, this is money that's being provided by the American Recovery Plan Act. It's not any local tax money. And we were in the process, because of hurricanes and everything, trying to expand the EOC anyway to a suitable size that we could put the people in there that has to be there. And the fire station was just there and aid to that. So if we can get a fire station and eight acres of land, of course, I think the city really did us a good deed on that, as far as that, if we'd had to build that building, I don't know what it would cost. But still, it's not local tax money at all. And we have to spend that money or have to turn it back in.
Will this help with our response times in any way that we had talked about at the, at the meeting two weeks ago, where we talked about response times were going up a little bit, were concerned about that?
Indirectly it will, because it'll provide additional space. So it gives us a very cost-effective way of adding space, office space for emergency services and bay space. And in the proposed upcoming budget, we are including in that two new ambulances and eight new positions for EMS to try to target specifically those response times that we're having issue with. So this gives us a ready-made solution to that problem.
Now, I do got a couple of comments, a couple of questions for, now, Mr. Bryson, if he would come on up, please. We've got to do something. There is no if and buts about it, and I understand that. It's what my questions are, is, it's not even to the point of what the value of the building is or anything else. But, but we have got to fit it to our needs. And right now, what I've been informed in the past and stuff, we don't even have a commercial-grade kitchen, or the facility's not big enough that we got now. This, all the money that we've got to put back in to this new improvements and everything else, what's it gonna look like? Because I've asked for even a paper drawout to how you guys are gonna do it and what plans you have, and nobody's got back with me.
If I, if I could answer your question in part, Mr. Bryson is actually not over the project for expansion of the EOC. He's helping, of course, in giving his technical expertise as to what facilities are needed. But Sherri Slater is the project coordinator for that and has been working with the architect. And a commercial, a commercial kitchen will be part of the EOC expansion that is also paid for by ARPA funds, but that will be brought to the Commissioners separately. Tonight's item is just to purchase that land and the fire station, which enables us to utilize the bays without having to build those as part of the expansion project.
Okay, then, then just let me say this, okay? And it's not shooting blanks or anything else. I just want the people to understand, you know, we're talking about a project, and we're piecemealing the project. We're gonna go ahead and purchase it, and we're not saying how much that we're gonna have in it or what it's gonna look like, and what our future costs are.
Commissioner, if I could maybe give a bit of a response to that. So this is slightly different than some other construction projects we do, because it is part of the ARPA funds. And the project ordinance for this was included in that total ARPA project ordinance. So just to clarify, the project was set for a total project cost of $11 million, which includes the cost of the purchase of this facility as a part of that. When we spoke with our architects initially on design, we sort of had two plans, because we didn't know where this purchase might go. And so the initial plan was just to add on to our EOC as it exists now and create the needed space. The second plan would be if the sale or the purchase of this property and building go through, then we would incorporate that into our plan. So as Ms. Russ, Ms. Griffin has said, the, the ambulance bays and the office space included in that, in the existing Fire Station Four will be used for our EMS staff. That frees up space in the existing EOC for renovation to make it more user-friendly for us during regular business, but also during emergency needs. And the addition that you all approved through the ARPA funds will create the additional space for the commercial kitchen that you spoke about, as well as the staff space that's been much needed in past events. So all of those things that you're speaking out about will be in the addition that was approved through the ARPA funds. And we will bring you plans very shortly on that.
So, so what wind zone are we gonna be at in that fire station? Wouldn't that whenever it's all said and done?
So if you'll allow me, because I don't want to say anything incorrect, we will bring that to you as an item just as quickly as we have all of that. But they are building it, or they are designing it for it to be, do you know the exact wind zone, do you recall?
Not for the fire station, because one of the things the architects had talked about is they were having to go back and look at the doors and the windows on the facility for potential upgrades. So at this point in time, they've not decided to find a specific wind zone for the fire station.
But for the building?
For the buildings, a four.
Okay.
For the new, new construction of building will be a four.
Okay, the, the square footage for the total project is what?
If you'll allow me to bring that back, sir, we have, there are a lot of pieces to that, and I do not want to say anything wrong on that. But I, I do promise you, very shortly, we're gonna have plans for you, you all to look at, and we'll bring you back an update that includes all of that with the square footage, as well as the design. Because we can, I, I want to just make sure I give you absolutely accurate information on every piece of that, since we've been through quite a few iterations not knowing whether or not this purchase would go through.
Okay. But what he was asking, though, is gonna be put in that building, like the kitchen and all the facilities and...
Yes, sir.
And I know you got your hands full, because you're also working on our senior citizens...
Yes, sir.
...project also, which I'm hoping you'll get to us pretty quick. And that's also, ARCA funds also.
Yes, sir.
One of the many lessons we learned from Hurricane Florence is that we need a bigger Emergency Operations Center. It's, it's good that we're able to use ARPA funds to do it, and this is just the first step in getting, I mean, we need to own the land, we don't need to build on leased land, so that doesn't make sense.
There was a plan that was made in one or two boards back, but that plan is probably obsolete from what we got now, because we didn't know at that time we were getting, or be, that the fire station was gonna be available. So I, I think now is, is just an idea of putting both of those together. And I think from what I'm hearing, that we've got to do both of those projects simultaneously, so we won't have to have the, the construction people come back and forth and redo, you know, leave the area and do one, and then come back and do the other, because getting relocated, I think, what'd you say, $50,000 just to relocate their equipment again?
Right, if we, if we have a construction crew leave the site and then have to come back in and set back up, there is an extra fee. So we're trying to do that cost-effectively.
So that makes all the sense in the world, if we can save $50,000, you know, on the total project.
Absolutely, and, and so in this case, if this, if this is approved tonight, then we will design the construction project in phases, so that it starts the farthest away from the fire station, and we're able to incorporate that as the city moves out, and we can bring that in toward the end. The upgrades to that will be done later in the project, so that we're able to allow the city use of it for a longer period of time.
And I got one more question, and then I'll, then I'll leave this alone. The, the dispatch side of it, how many workstations do we have in the current dispatch?
Eight, sir.
Eight. Now, you've, now, you've told me in the next 10 to 15 years, how many workstations are you, do you think we're gonna have?
Right now, we've not projected that out. I, I don't remember any conversation where we projected that out. However, with the construction of what we're talking about, will free up room into the back of the 911 center and allow us to be able to expand out of another four workstations across the back wall as we need that.
I will add to that question, sir, about the 911 center. That, the, the EOC currently is on a generator, obviously. And that's a, a big deal, right? We don't want our 911 center going down. In the construction process, what we've asked them to do is to keep that generator as a, as a redundancy. So the new facility will have a generator that will, that will power the facility, just as you would expect it to. But we'll keep the existing generator as a backup for redundancy for the 911 center. So we're building in as much, I hate to say redundancy again, but we're building it up in as many safeguards as we can without adding cost to the project.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay, or yea? Nay or yea? Okay, 61. Thank you. Item seven, appointments.
No, you got...
I'm sorry, section C, budget amendments. You almost slipped by, didn't you, Amy?
Almost. Good evening Chairman, Vice Chairman and Commissioners. I have four budget amendments for your consideration tonight. Three of them are for board-approved grants. One of them is to recognize additional revenues from housing federal prisoners and to use those funds for necessary surveillance camera upgrades in the sheriff's office. And it's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the listed budget amendments.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
Amy, so we're getting rid of the analog cameras?
I believe so. Oh, he's already gone.
I guess they left. I'm pretty sure that's what it was, because when that jail was built, that's what they put in there, and we tried to get them to put digital, and they didn't do it. So now we're gonna go to digital. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a motion and a second, and all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appointments, Jennifer, on the Board of Equalization and Review.
Yes, I'll present this for us, and it is a consideration of Jennifer Kiefer, who has expressed interest in being put on the Board of Equalization and Review. The Board has approved in, on the April 4th, 2022 agenda to add two alternate members to serve on the Special Board of Equalization and Review. These must be individuals who reside in Anzo County and that are knowledgeable in real estate appraisal work, financial dealings and farm properties. Alternate members are going to participate as a voting member of the Board only when there are less than five regular members available to conduct the business of the As I said already, Ms. Kiefer has expressed interest. No other individuals have expressed an interest in serving. Her application is on file and has been certified by the clerk's office, and we do respectfully request the appointment of Jennifer Kiefer to the Board of Equalization and Review in the category of at-large alternate for a one-year term, which will expire February 28, 2023.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of appointing Jennifer Kiefer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Holly Ridge Planning Board Extraterritorial Jurisdiction, ETJ?
Yes, sir. The Board of County Commissioners of each affected county appoints extraterritorial members to the municipal planning board and Board of Adjustment. Ms. Gaskins has expressed an interest in serving on the Holly Ridge Planning Board as the ETJ representative for a three-year term and has provided a citizen participation application. No other individuals have expressed an interest in serving, and the application is on file and has been certified by the clerk's office. We do respectfully request that you consider Ms. Anna Gaskins as the Extraterritorial Jurisdiction Representative for a three-year term expiring April 18, 2025.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We didn't have anything relocated to the...
Coastal Carolina.
Yes, we have one more.
Okay, Coastal Carolina Board.
Yes, sir, one more appointment. Coastal Carolina Community College Board of Trustees. Mr. Chamberlain has served on the Board since 2006 and is currently also the Chair of the Board's Finance Committee. He has expressed an interest in continuation of service. He provided a citizen participation application, which is on file and has been certified by the clerk's office. We do respectfully request the appointment of Mr. Craig Chamberlain for a four-year term. It would expire June 30, 2026.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We didn't have anything moved from the consent agenda, so we'll now move on to item nine, the manager's comment. Ms. Griffin?
Yes, I just have one item I would like to call to the Board and everyone's attention. I would like to congratulate Mr. Chris White, who is in the audience with us this evening. He's the Director of our Albert J. Ellis Airport, of course. He has been named the Southeast Chapter of the American Association of Airport Executives as their 2022 Airport Professional of the Year, and this is quite an honor. We really appreciate Chris and all he does out at our airport. As all of you know, our airport last year had an economic impact estimated at $565 million. And annually, we, we see about 350,000 passengers pass through our airport. We are very proud of all that he has accomplished out there, and we hope he'll keep up the good work. That's all I have for this evening, unless you have questions. Thank you.
Why don't you ask him to come up to, to the podium there? You know, the employees come up. I mean, he's done an outstanding job, and, and, you know, give him a good round of applause. Appreciate your service, sir.
Well, thank you, thank you. It's, it's a wonderful honor to be recognized by your peers, but this, this really goes to the staff. I'm just the guy that got the plaque, but the, the staff is what helps us get all this stuff done and make all this community impact.
It's called teamwork. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Congratulations.
We'll move on now to Commissioner comments. See, we started with Royce last time, we'll start with Walter Scott this time.
I'm not against the, the purchase of the land. I, I just feel that we need to do a better job, be more proactive, and, and let the public know exactly what we're gonna be doing, you know, and the reasons why we're doing it. Ever since I've been a Commissioner, I've been hearing from, from different sources that everything is too small. It's not big enough. Is this the right fit? I'm not convinced. But we've got to do something, and I respect the, you know, the Commissioners approving it, and, and I'm gonna do my best to support everything that we got to do. I just think that we need to be more proactive and get all our numbers together and then present it, and, and I really appreciate it. I thank you for giving me an opportunity to serve, and good night.
Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You got me off guard there. I want to congratulate Chris White also. Thank you, Chris, and all of our county employees during County Government Employee Week. We really appreciate all the work that you do. I want to thank Commissioner Knapp for that very thorough explanation of the Burton Park deal. We, we appreciate it. We appreciate that. Took everything away that I could have said. He said it all. Very good. And I need to send condolences to Mr. Arthur Peak's family. Mr. Peak was a part-time employee of Parks and Rec Department for the last five years, and he passed away over the weekend. He was involved in our youth programs, and we just want to send our condolences to his family, and we appreciate his service. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Buchanan?
Thank you. Not much more to say tonight. We've had a pretty good meeting. I want to thank our employees, which I say that all the time, the staff and Angie for what Angie does. I mean, she organizes all this stuff, and I know you have a lot of people helping you, but I watch what goes on all the time. I'm up here and I see what's going on with our employees, and they're really, when people love coming to work, they, they do a good job. And the customer service that we have in our community is just out of this world. It's the best I've ever seen. Jack and I have been around a long time, and we had some times when, in the past, it wasn't that good. But we've come a long way, and our employees deserve all that. Chris, congratulations. You do a good job out there, and I appreciate what you do. And everybody have a safe trip.
Thank you. Commissioner Price?
Two weeks ago, we had a budget workshop, and, and one of the things that was shared there was the fire service needs, you know, which really, you know, drew my attention to that area, that, you know, we've got some engines or some trucks that they don't even make parts for anymore. It's very disconcerting that, that we, we have that situation. And I know our staff had planned to get out and, and share this with the public, but I hope we can do that sooner rather than later so they can see the same information that we saw in black and white up on the screen, you know, of, of what the needs are for fire engines, tankers, service engines, brush units, whatever, the stations, the age that they are. I, I think that's vital, that we get that information out to the public and, and make them aware of that because it, it kind, it kind of hits you a little bit more, or it did me, you know, whenever I see it up there in black and white up there on the screen. But I appreciate everything the staff does, and thank you for coming out this evening. Have a good night.
Mr. Knapp?
Just a couple of things. First and foremost, congratulations, Sharon. Very proud of you. Ms. Sharon Griffin got married recently. I'm not even gonna begin to spell, say your new husband's last name because that, it's long, but she will remain Sharon Griffin. We're very happy for you. We could see your face all lit up today, and it's, it's a great thing for you. So congratulations again. I want to thank Mr. Crass for coming out today. He drove up here, he came out of his way, and, and I think the, again, I've already said it before, not gonna reiterate it, beat a dead horse. It's a win-win for the county. And I love the fact that, you know, that we talk about due diligence and we talk about researching this and putting it out in the open. I, I don't think we could have been more transparent about this deal than we were tonight with the debate, not the debate, but the discussion and things of that nature, and putting the release out that you did from the county office. You know, too many times we hear people talk about there's backroom doors or backroom deals being done on Onslow County. Well, if that's the case, I'm not privy to that because apparently I haven't been invited to those backroom deals. I know that we talk a lot as commissioners by phone because we can't have more than four of us in a room without, you know, causing a forum. But, you know, what we do, what we discuss as commissioners, and I've been on the, on the board for five years, and what we've done, we've done openly here in this, in this BOC. You know, we had, we have closed meetings that are mandated by North Carolina General Statute that we discuss personnel matters and other things. But, you know, for the most part, this has been one of the most transparent boards that I've ever seen and been a part of, and that was our, a lot of us on this board, that was our platform when we ran to be transparent, and that's what we try to do. And, you know, I, I challenge anybody to challenge that because I don't know how much more, how more transparent we can be. One other couple of things real quick. Be careful what you listen to, you know, as far as information is concerned, misinformation, okay? If you have a question, pick up the phone and call one of the commissioners. You can pick up any one of, our, our numbers are, are public. If you have a question, ask me. I'll be brutally honest with you and tell you, you know, what I think or what's going on. But if you're, you're, and I've had several citizens do that recently, and it's been, it's paid big dividends. They'll, they'll text me, Facebook Messenger, call me, say, hey, Commissioner Knapp, is this true? This is what this, this person is saying. And I'll say, no, that's not true. This is what, what the facts are, and when you clarify it for them, they understand and they, and they appreciate that. So just keep that in mind when you're, if you have a question about anything. One thing we didn't talk about real quick was on the consent agenda. Brenda Lakowski, the wife of Mark Lakowski, who passed away recently from COVID-19, you know, brought to the commissioners, and she's gonna be purchasing his weapon, his service weapon, and hopefully in the future, we'll work out the details. We can present that to her or to her daughter, who's a lieutenant in the U.S. Coast Guard. Brenda and I go way back for 20-plus years. She's a good friend of mine, and it was a tragic loss that we lost him to COVID. And the last thing, if my son or my grandson is listening out there, it's International Autistic Month around the world. My son is autistic. He's seven years old. He's on the autism spectrum. He's smart as a whip. He can memorize numbers. He can look at my license plate and memorize it just by glancing at it, and he's been very helpful to me because when I'm trying to gra, get the information from my plate. But I think it's great to, to recognize autistic children. Now that I have a grandson who's autistic, I can see the benefit of having them in my life especially. They're just normal children with special needs. My God, he's just smart. I just, I, I can't, you know, and he is seven years old and he talks like he's 25. And I can have a full-grown conversation. I know this because we talked for an hour and a half yesterday at the dining room table yesterday, and he was telling me about Russia and the Ukraine and stuff, and so I was very impressed. So I wanted to shout that out to him. And one last thing, my friend is here tonight, Drew Edney. Raise your hand, Drew. Drew's a good friend of mine, and he's a hardcore Republican. He's from South Carolina. He wants to get involved, and he wanted to come to the commissioners' meeting, and I'm glad you came, brother, and I appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman? Just congratulations to all the Onslow County government employees. They have a great week. Recognize the work that they do, and I know Angie's worked hard and got a lot of stuff scheduled for that, and we appreciate that. But Jason, good job tonight. I appreciate what you've brought to Onslow County since you've come on board. And Sherri, I know you've done a lot of work, working with architects and, and I, blueprints, I guess, is what they're called, between the senior center and the EOC, and then working with people that are experts in those fields. I know that time is, is tremendous, and I appreciate you being able to answer those questions tonight as we continue to move forward to do what we need to do to meet the needs of Onslow County, using ARPA funds to enhance things from senior services to a much larger, larger, newer building attached here, and then to a, a newer attachment to the EOC and then with that fire station number four out there. So we appreciate everything that, that y'all are doing. Thank you very much, and have a wonderful evening. Thank you. I also wanted to congratulate Chris. I actually congratulated him before the meeting started because I knew about his award, and that's quite an accomplishment and what you've done to make the airport better. And I fly out of there. I'm hoping that our citizens will fly out of Albert Ellis more often than they have been, but I enjoy flying out there. It's a good airport. It's not crowded. You get in and out, and I encourage everybody to use our airport. It's really a lot better than driving to Raleigh or Wilmington or somewhere else to go out. And I noticed, you know, Easter was yesterday, and I, I see it, and I find it hard to understand how Easter now has become so commercialized. People are wearing pastel, the girls are wearing pastel colors. They thinking about Easter bunnies, they thinking about Easter rabbits, but they don't really realize the, the spirit of Easter. I mean, Easter is our Christ has risen, and same way with, with Christmas, you know, Christ is born, and it's all commercialized now. So I hope people take that in consideration when we have next Easter, when you go to church and worship our Lord. So other than that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Take it. We are adjourned.